And we'll get started and. Uh, could we, uh, Michelle, will you, uh, take the minutes for us?
Absolutely.
Okay, would you like to roll call for us?
You don't need to roll call, I just need to establish that way of a forum.
Forum, okay, that's fine, that's fine. And, uh, next on the agenda is the approval of December fourth meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes as sent.
Do I have a, have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes have been approved. We have no old business. First thing on new business is the election of officers.
And Kathy's not here, but she contacted us last week to say that she'd be willing to be vice chairperson, just.
And I'll volunteer to be chair, um, with that said too. Do we have a discussion?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we have a discussion?
I have a discussion. I said congratulations. That's good.
I was just gonna like move a motion for him to be chair.
That's fine.
And you can do it for both people on one motion, so for Brian to be chairperson, unless somebody else wanted to. Okay, so Brian's chairperson and then Kathy is vice chair unless somebody else wanted to.
No, I think that's great.
So you can do one motion.
Okay, I'll move a motion for Brian to be chair and Kathy to be co-chair or vice chair.
Vice chair, I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's good. And I'll give you this one.
Sweet. Alright.
And that's great because I won't be here. That's good.
Alright.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want me to finish or do you want to take over?
Um, Brian can go ahead and do it. That's usually how they do it with the city commissioners once they switch them. The new.
We can do it.
Mayor of the nation, so.
Yeah.
You wanna go?
Yeah, I'll do it. I, I need to practice.
Yep. You don't need to switch seats, but yeah, Brian can, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good.
Who's on first?
So where's the gavel?
Where's the, where's the gavel?
He got a gavel.
Where's the? They hit the gavel again.
We'll make sure that's happened.
They hit the gavel, Brian, they hit the gavel.
I move a motion to have no gavel.
Call it.
I think it's in a box under Sheri's.
Yeah.
Yes, and it's not moving.
We'll make sure I have that.
Man, alright. Um, so the second thing on the agenda, second item on the agenda is, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero one, special use permit for three hundred North Fourth Street. Um, so we'll do, we'll open that to public hearing.
Um.
Or do we, we staff report?
Yeah, staff report. Yeah, staff report and then you can, um, open public hearing.
Alright, so, um, we'll have the staff report on this, please.
If I can do this one.
Um, so this is a special use permit to allow a gas station in the north neighborhood overlay district. It's located at three hundred North Fourth Street. Um, gas stations are allowed in the north neighborhood redevelopment overlay district with approval of a special use permit. Um, currently, the gas station operates as a gas station, um, and because it's a non-conforming use, um, per code, it says any non-conforming use shall not be physically extended, expanded, or enlarged. The owner has requested a building permit to build an addition on the rear of the structure. Um, and so the owner's requesting the special use permit to bring the property into conformance and in order to enlarge the structure. Um, the commission may recommend issuance, um, whenever it finds that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. Staff does believe that this application apply, or complies with all provisions of the development regulations. The proposed special use at the specis- specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. The property is currently a gas station and has been since at least the early two thousands in its current configuration. It is one of the few gas stations within the downtown area and continued use will contribute to the economic development, welfare, and convenience of the public. The special use will not cause substantial injury to the property value of the property in the neighborhood in which it's located. Staff does not feel that the proposed use will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood as the property is current, currently existing as a gas station. That the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not, uh, dominate the immediate neighborhood as to prevent development and use of the neighboring property in accordance with the zoning regulations. The property owner is proposing a four hundred square foot addition on the rear. The addition meets the rear setbacks for the near, or for the north neighborhood overlay district. Um, at the time of this meeting, or writing of the staff report, um, we hadn't heard from any of the notified, um, owners, property owners within two hundred feet. Um, but I believe, um, we have someone who will be here tonight to speak to it. Um, staff recommends approval of the special use permit requested based on the analysis and findings included herein.
Alright, thank you for that. Um, discussion.
I have a comment, and I think, uh, just, I don't think we should call it a gas station. We should call it a convenience store with, with fuel pumps. They're not a gas stations. It's not a fast gas.
What is the actual special use?
So it's for a gas station, that's based off of the definitions that are in the development regulations.
Well, our development regulations should be obtained because it's, they're convenience stores, fuel pumps, because they sell groceries and stuff inside. That's my only comment.
Does that change anything, like tax revenue wise?
No.
What we collect?
No, no.
No, okay. Alright, any other questions for the staff or discussion about this? Nope. Okay, um, we can open it to a public hearing at this time. Um, if there are any, uh, members of the audience that has anything to say about this special use permit, please come up to the mic.
I represent the owner.
Um, please come to the mic and say your name and.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Is there, just, is there anyone else here to talk about that property, this property? This one, okay. Go ahead.
Um, actually, the owner is out of town right now.
Okay.
Um, he's Matthew plus as worker were there too. So I'm representing that constitution right now. And unfortunately.
What's your name?
My name is, uh, Sam. Sam. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I just.
Um, so you're, all, all you're doing is adding on to the back of the, of the store.
Yeah, it's, we get, we just want to expand the cooler, the cooler.
Okay, so it's, it's for the refrigeration that, that's going in, okay.
Are you getting a new facelift too?
Uh, the front?
Yes, the front and pumps and stuff.
So basically, the building is kind of like too old, so what we are planning to do, renovate the building and make it better than before. Yeah.
I like your, I like your new facade.
Yeah, I, I, I'm especially interested in the, uh, redoing all of the concrete and the landscaping and, and all of that that's included in here.
Yeah, it's like, so, uh, we are making it more convenient for the public.
Okay.
So they don't have to face any kind of problem.
Yes, um, and there won't be any problem, um, with vehicles. Will you have traffic going in between the concrete wall?
So, yeah, we have like enough space for the parking lot that's in the front, so there's no back parking lot. So there is no space in the back to go through and all that, so, but the parking lot is in the front and we have enough area for that.
Okay, so there won't be any traffic?
Any traffic, yeah.
Going back over there, okay.
Also, we are planning to change the pumps that she was talking about.
I was gonna ask, are you gonna add more pumps?
We're gonna add new pumps.
Just new ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because there is no space for the pumps, so definitely we cannot add new ones, but, yeah. If there was, uh, uh, enough space, we could add more.
Do you have a new distributor?
Um, like, uh, for the.
Who's that, who, who, just, who give you, who sells you your fuel?
Who sells us? It's, uh, World Connect, World Connect, that's, uh, and the company is Philip sixty six.
It's what?
Philip sixty six.
Yeah, so you're gonna have new Philip sixty six logos, okay, that's what I figured, okay.
Yeah, Philip sixty six, yeah. Yeah.
Um, will the, will there be any, um, changes to the signs or, or signage or anything like that? Is that something that is a second?
There, yeah, we might put a new sign because we changed the old property name, like the store name too.
Sure.
So there might be a change in the sign too, but it's gonna be in the front.
Okay, so, um, please, uh, is it your brother that is the owner?
Uh, it's my uncle, yeah.
Your uncle, I'm sorry. Um, please pay attention to the rules later on in the agenda because there, there are some, uh, proposed changes to signs. Uh, but you wanna be, uh, up on that or?
Well, uh, I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about the sign yet.
Sure, but just, just so that you're.
In case, in case, yeah, we'll definitely take care of it.
Keeping, keeping that in mind so that you don't run into any problems on the back end.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for the developer?
So there's gonna be a little bit of rebranding?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but not, I'm not sure about the sign yet.
Sure.
Yeah, like how, how it's gonna look, the aesthetics of it.
Oh, yeah.
I, I see that there's a kind of a, a plan here.
Yeah, I provided a map, yeah.
Um, when is your ETA or estimated time, like if it gets approved and everything?
We were, yeah, we were just waiting for their approval.
Okay, so, and you're gonna operate while the construction's going on, or are you gonna shut down for a little bit?
Um, uh, that question, I think my uncle can answer that because I'm not sure.
I wouldn't think they could pump gas since they don't have any pumps.
Well, they might be able to sell something inside.
I'm sure they can, yeah.
They have snacks, snacks and drinks and.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, any other public comment? No, we'll close the public hearing. That is closed. Now I'll entertain a motion, um, so we can do one of three things. We can recommend approval. We can recommend the city commission deny the special use permit, or we can table it for another discussion, uh, at a later time.
I still move that we, I recommend the approval.
Alright, we have a one motion.
Second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit twenty twenty four dash oh one, um, for three hundred North Fourth Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstaining? No? Good. Move on to the next item, twenty twenty four oh four, special use permit for nine twenty North Fourteenth Street. Um, this is two family dwelling in a R one six zoning district. We'll have a staff report.
I'll do this one as well.
Thank you.
Just getting it up. I don't know what's going on. Okay, here we go. Um, so this is a special use permit requesting to allow a two-family dwelling in R one six zoning district. Um, nine twenty North Fourteenth, um, is located at Pawnee and Fourteenth Street. Um, the property is currently a quarter acre vacant lot. Um, there was a two-story house that was on the lot previously, but it was demolished in two thousand nine. Um, the applicant is seeking the special use permit to build a duplex. Um, the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that the proposed use, uh, complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. Staff believes that this application complies with all provisions of the development regulations. The proposed special use at the specis- specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, and convenience of the public. If approved, the property will fill a need in the community by adding a two-family housing option. The special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the proposed use will cause any substantial injury to the value of any of the properties in the neighborhood. The location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with, and the location of the site with respect to the streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of the neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. The proposed new structure is a two-story duplex. It was a historically developed lot and this will not dominate the immediate neighborhood. Notification was sent to property owners within two hundred feet. Um, we haven't heard from any of them thus far. Um, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit requested based on the analysis and findings included herein.
I have one, one question about the, uh, when were the letters sent out?
Um, is it twenty days, Michelle?
It's a minimum of twenty, so it's actually a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Uh?
It was actually there, no doubt, January eleventh.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, I have a question. I have a question on the plot plan. Does not match, match up, what's what they got for the building plans? They got the garage is separate here and, and L-shaped, and over here they got the garages with living areas next to them.
So we can, we, are you the developer?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we can have the developer answer those questions.
Yeah, and I would just, um, kind of remind everybody that this is for a special use permit for the use, not for a specific design of a duplex that would be built here, it's just for the use.
Right, to create a, a duplex.
Yeah, to allow a two-family.
Any questions for the staff? Nope. Nope, alright, we can go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Um, we have the developer here. If you'll please state your name clearly into the microphone and your address, so we can get that recorded.
Address of myself?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, just in case we need to get ahold of you for whatever reason.
Well, my name's Eric Anderson.
Okay.
I use middle initials J because there's lots of us. Uh, I live in Oregon, so I live in the Dallas, Oregon. And I come out here in the wintertime all the time, so I thought I would buy some property, build up a retirement. I heard that there's a good need for quality rentals, so.
Sure, yeah, we had, that, there's a demand, a housing demand.
Um, a lot of those prints I put out, I didn't need to, I was having, I was, I was only here for like a week and then I was on the phone trying to deal with it, I kept sending the wrong papers, so.
Okay.
The one that has the actual whiteout shows where it's at is just the one we're really dealing with.
Okay, and, uh, so this one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so.
Those ones are just, I just kept sending the wrong things, she kept keeping them, so.
Okay, good deal.
So I was trying to meet requests.
Have you built homes before duplexes?
I've helped build, I have a contractor I'm gonna bring with me.
Okay.
And he'll get licensed and everything. So yes, we've built. During COVID, I had nothing better to do, so I built a two-car garage, it's a two-bedroom apartment about it.
Okay.
But that was in Oregon.
Sure, alright, and, um, do you currently have any other rental property in Leavenworth?
No, this won't be a first.
This will be your first.
First anywhere other than on, what is, the top that I've had for seventeen years in Oregon.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for the developer?
Um, no, I, since, it's just for a particular thing, I wanna keep the questions to that. I have some other curious questions, but I won't ask.
You can just ask it now.
And I'm, I'm just note that any, you know, setback or high or low requirements would have to meet our, you know, the standard zoning requirements and that would be handled when they come in for building permit.
So the item proposed?
So the spacing that it put on the credit is meets that?
What the, but that also, the loose sand grass and knee grass on the floor?
The twenty-five feet setback?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, but yeah, when, when you come in for building permit, it allows to meet all our, yeah, setbacks and.
Okay, good.
Okay, so then I have other questions. Since I don't live here, are we coming here quite often? Do I always be present for everything, or can I work through the city on internet?
Yeah, no, you don't need to be present for most of it, yeah.
I mean, I can be, it's just.
Do you have a project manager here for you when, when I build?
Yeah.
He's got an excellent project manager, right?
I'm, I'm working, obviously.
I have.
He was talking about retirement, I'm looking to find something else to do, it's my retirement.
There you go.
This is it.
Good. Yes, and housing is, is definitely in demand here, this is a, a vacant area. Um, are, is there anyone here else to speak on this item? No? Uh, do you have anything else to, to add that you want us to consider?
Not this present time, I mean, obviously later on I'll have lots of.
Sure, and these are great points of contact for any questions.
Okay, well, I have access to, to emailing with them and probably asking questions as we go.
Yes, they're, they're very responsive and, and very.
Okay, so I do have one question then. So when I do build it, I wasn't gonna just come and just build the whole thing. So I don't know if that's, uh, gonna be a problem. What I wanna do is, the first time I come, I wanted to frame it all in so it looks very presentable to the neighborhood, but it's not finished on the inside.
Yeah, all that, all that planning will be part of that.
That'll be handled through our building inspection department, they're the ones that handle building permits.
Okay.
Yeah, just as long as it's a safe structure.
Well, we keep safe locked up, but I also want it to look presentable to our neighbors.
Yes.
Even though it's not finished on the inside, so.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Alright, then we'll close the pub- public hearing at this time. And I can entertain a motion, same three options exist, recommend approval, recommend, uh, not approving, or tabling for the next meeting.
Um, I'll do a motion to recommend approval of nine twenty North Fourteenth Street.
Alright, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Can, can I, can I ask a question?
You got, let, let us finish the, the vote real quick.
Okay.
We've, we got, everybody's good, so that is, that special use permit is now, we recommend approval to the city commission.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so another question, if I looked at the map, uh, the address is nine twenty North Fourteenth, but I was gonna actually have it come up Pawnee. I was told that it's not gonna be a problem. And part of the reason why is that there's length of that, that side of the property, but also there's seven beautiful trees that I don't wanna have to remove, it's.
Yeah, and that, that can be worked out through our GIS department.
Okay, I just love the trees, I don't wanna see it have to go anywhere.
I love hearing you say that, so that's.
Me too.
Yes, alright, thank you, sir, and thanks for, for coming. Alright, uh, next, uh, agenda item, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. Uh, this is an SUV, which I'm, I don't know what an SUV is, special use.
A subdivision.
Subdivision, SUV.
Got it, yeah.
That makes, makes more sense.
Yeah, there you go. There it is, there it is, so it's a luxury edition final plat. Um, and this is for Luxury and Imports, we have a staff report.
Yeah, so, and I, um, just before I get into it, I noticed that a typo here, I just a cut and paste under the subject, it says final plat for Westbury Hills West. It is not for Westbury Hills West, it is for Luxury and Imports. That was just a cut and paste error, so I think that's the only place it said that. Um, but, so again, this is a final plat request for, um, Luxury Edition Final Plat. Uh, the property is occupied by Luxury and Imports at Fourth and Eisenhower. Property is currently unplatted. Um, it's two and a half acres total in size. Um, the plat is being requested in order to divide the property into two lots. Uh, the building up here on their lot to the north, uh, where they do some, I think, bodywork and such is a new addition within the last couple of years, and so this will be split, uh, into a separate lot from the main, um, building that's down here closer to the corner. And then they've also purchased some property from, um, it's Lexico, I believe, to the north. This, uh, kind of piece of parking lot there, and then they've purchased a little bit from the bank to the west as well, so those pieces that they've purchased are being incorporated into the plat as part of this request. Uh, so, um, the property is owned general business district, it is an allowed use in general business district, so no issues there. Our development review committee reviewed this on January fourth. There were, um, a number of technical items related to the plat, um, that have been worked through, um, and are being corrected. It's also been reviewed by the county surveyor, which is standard for all plats. Um, and again, any of the technical issues are, um, or have been already addressed. So staff would recommend approval of the final plat, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Alright, thank you. Um, any questions?
I have none for the staff.
Seems very straightforward.
Right.
Good, um, we'll go ahead and open, uh, public hearing.
Not a public hearing for a plat, um, but the people are here to talk about it, and applicants are.
Is there, is there anyone here to talk about that now? Okay.
I have to recluse myself because they are a, a client of ours.
Okay, so we'll have you abstain. Okay.
So I'll move a motion, um, to recommend, um, what is the address on this? Um, this Luxury Edition Final Plat for Luxury and Imports, is that correct?
Um, just, um, approval of the fin- the final plat for Luxury Edition.
Okay, for the Luxury Edition.
Yeah.
I, I move a motion for Luxury Edition Final Plat.
Alright, so we have a motion to recommend approval.
To approve it, since it doesn't go on, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
One abstention.
Okay, you got that, Michelle? It's tricky, it's a different box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, you got that one?
Yep.
Alright, um, last agenda item, twenty twenty-three thirty, these are text amendments, proposed text amendments to uh, the twenty sixteen development regulations. Um, so I, we'll start with the staff report on the proposed changes.
Yep, so, um, again, these are, this is the annual update to our development regulations. You guys had a chance to take a first look at this, I believe, in December. Um, yes, in December, um, and so these, or maybe it was November, everything's kinda run together. Um, but so these are the actual changes that are being proposed after we ran through them with you in November. So, a lot of them are kind of just housekeeping, clarifying things, there are a few things that are actually changing. So I'm just gonna kind of go through them briefly. I'm not gonna get specifically into most of the housekeeping ones. If there's any questions or comments as I'm going through them, let me know as we're going through them instead of waiting till the end and then trying to go back.
Right.
So we'll just kind of run through them.
Okay.
So, um, in article one, um, this was just kind of a housekeeping change. There was a sp- a specific date listed as to when staff was supposed to have updated zoning map, updated regulations. And since that kind of varies year to year when it fits in the cycle, um, we just took out that specific date um, and stated that, um, the city keeps current versions of the regulations and zoning map on file. In article two, um, applications and procedures, out of the requirement that the applicants provide us two full-sized copies of all recorded plats. Um, that's something standard that we just need to get back for our files after the plat has been approved and then recorded with the county. We need to make sure we get an actual copy of that. Um, and then moving a few things, uh, a few articles to the jurisdiction of the Board of Zoning Appeals in lieu of the city commission. And when the regulations were first done, and this kind of carried over from, I think, two thousand ten when they were initially set up, um, several articles were listed as going to the city commission for any sort of variance request, that's not a statutory requirement. Um, I, we couldn't find any reason as to why that was set up in the first place. The city commission generally doesn't want to be handling variance requests for development regulations. The Board of Zoning Appeals is really the correct body for those, so just, I'm clearing that up, making sure that the correct items are going to the Board of Zoning Appeals instead of funneling things to the city commission. Um, article four, um, we did add a provision that adjacent right-of-way width may not be counted towards the minimum lot width requirement. Um, sometimes we will get lots that you've, and then you guys have seen these come in on plats, um, where a lot is at the end of a dead-end street.
Yeah.
And so sometimes when there's, uh, difficulty getting the required lot width for lots where they're trying to kind of finagle them in, um, developers or property owners will want to use that dead-end width to count as lot width requirement. Um, that gets really tricky, our public works department does not like driveways coming off of dead-end streets. Um, as that can be kind of confusing for folks, and so we just, we try to steer them away from including that as a lot width, but we just wanted to formalize that, that you need to actually have that lot width, not be counting the end of a dead-end street that may be adjacent to.
Is that the hammerhead discussion that we, that we had?
Uh, yeah, 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 that would include that.
Okay, that would.
Yeah.
And um, later we talk about paving materials, but i- is, is there any requirements for that, like if that, if that opening?
For like turnaround, maybe?
Yeah, like if they do have to do that. Yeah, like if they do have to do that hammerhead, like what is that constructed of, like what does that consist of, what's?
So that all falls under public works requirements, um and we can kind of talk more about the, the paving when we get down there, it's the next section, but yeah, the, those turnarounds are completely handled by public works.
But then in the special use or just in the, in the rezoning, we would be taking that into consideration as we approve or disapprove that plat?
It would be for ever as subdivision typically when you're looking at a lot layout.
Okay.
Um and so no, that is not something that you guys would be dealing with. That's all handled as they come through for permits, for various permits.
Okay.
Um the next item in here, we added a provision or changed the provisions to allow three detached accessory structures on parcels two acres or larger. Um we've been seeing a number of variance requests come in for this on these larger parcels um that are over two acres. Um these are typically gonna be properties where they have more need for equipment to take care of their properties. Um or they might have a horse or have a need for some sort of other storage building. And so this is again, just one of those where we've seen a number of variance requests come in. They've been going through, um and so just sort of giving that a little more wiggle room for folks with larger properties to have three detached accessory structures instead of just two. Um they would still need to comply with all of our size requirements that we have, um but just kind of getting that extra one on those larger parcels. Uh next, just adding a specific setback requirement for pools, we did not have that in there.
And so what is, what is the purpose of, of that?
Uh for the pools?
Yeah, for having the setback with the, the, the pool five feet from any primary building, like where did those?
So that's the building code issue, yes.
We're just trying to make them to work with the existing building codes.
Okay, so that, that matches with the, okay.
Yes, so building code does require specific setback for pools, and so that's us kind of getting in line with that.
Okay, all right, and the insurance.
And the insurance company requires defenses.
Right, sure.
Yeah, and building code does as well, yeah, so, yeah.
Is it a four-foot thing?
No.
Is it three?
It's gonna be a wall fence.
Um the next.
No, it's a brick fence, so.
The next is um adding solar arrays as a permitted accessory use. Solar arrays are the um ground mounted. Um solar collection.
Do you have to have a permit for the roof mounted?
Um it's not a special use permit or anything, they're, they're all permitted. Um so you, you have to have a building permit to install them as a, you know, it's electrical work, and so that needs to be permitted and inspected. Um but just, we have, our article ten specifically deals with solar and wind collection systems. And so this was more kind of getting it in line with what's uh defined in article ten. So just specifically stating that solar arrays are permitted accessory use.
Okay.
Um next, uh kind of in line with that is removing solar energy facilities from requirement for special use permit. Um that was not in line with anything that was anywhere else in the development regulations. Um in our use table towards the end, that lays out what requires a special use and what does not. Uh solar energy facilities were not listed as requiring a special use permit, so again, that was kind of cleaning up, making sure everything is in line.
So is there, is a special use permit required in the new regulations for any renewable energy, like a turbine or um?
Wind turbines do require especially as permit, those um structures are generally more intrusive for neighboring properties, and so that had already been kind of called out as needing a special use permit. The solar facilities um that we're talking about here would not.
And why aren't they just all in the same area, all the renewable energy, the, the same section with the same kind of rules?
They're, they're, they're in the same section, um but they, since they're different types of structures,
Sure.
there's a little bit of different rules, but yeah, article ten, or sorry, no.
Yeah, ten is solar energy, but do we have one specifically for?
Art- article ten is, i- includes the wind energy.
It does include the wind energy, okay. Oh, got this big binder now too.
Yeah, so yeah, article ten includes wind and solar, and they're both separately.
It's very helpful.
Yeah.
Seems like it.
And anybody who wants a hard copy of the development regulations, Michelle, I can get those printed for you, so. And then just the last one in article four is um changing the language regarding signage for home occupations just to reference article eight, which is our sign chapter. Instead of having it called out in two different places in the regulations, that's kind of how we end up with things not lining up, so um just stating that it needs to comply with what's defined in article eight. And then moving on to article five, which is the access and parking. Um this is one, kind of what you were talking about, Brian, we talked about this a little bit last time, was adding a provision to allow alternative paving materials as acceptable parking surface for single-family dwellings. Um currently, it just states asphalt or concrete. Um there's a lot of new materials that may be appropriate in some situations, and so just add a provision that alternative materials are allowed with review and approval by our public works department. Um just so it's not a kind of a free-for-all, and like we had said last time, we didn't want to specifically call them out and limit ourselves to materials that uh may not exist today. But you know, with technology changing so quickly, there could be some, you know, really great alternatives in six months that we don't know about now. So just stating that, yes, you can have different materials, those just need to be reviewed and approved by public works.
Um is public works approving just the material, or are they approving the design as well?
Um for the single family, it's, it would be just the material, this is for driveways.
Yes, right, but are they coming in with a full plan, so we ask them to come, you know, for other special u- use permits with like a plan of what they're going to do? Will, will they be saying, hey, we're gonna make a driveway out of plastic bottles or, or whatever it is, and this is approved? Are they also saying this is what the driveway will, will be, and that's being approved with that material?
Yes, so when someone comes in for a permit for a driveway, um they have to have their plot plan that shows where the driveway is gonna be and specify what that material is going to be. So public works looks at all of that. We check, it's mainly our department that's looking at the design of it to make sure it meets our, you know, lot coverage requirements, setback requirements, that kind of thing, so yes, the, the design and placement of driveways is already part of the review and approval process.
There's nothing that's added with adding this step to it or, or this process, there's nothing?
No, 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 it's, this is just strictly about the materials.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And then moving on to article six, which is landscape and site design. This section includes um all of our fencing requirements, so that's what a lot of this is in reference to. Um the first is just changing the wording from areas or properties to uses just to be consistent throughout the chapter. Um there sometimes becomes a question when something would reference commercial areas or commercial properties um instead of commercial uses or residential uses. Um and this is really in terms of, yeah, landscaping and fencing, fencing. Um the intent is to apply these regulations to the use of the property, not what it's actually zoned. Um as you're probably aware, in a lot of areas of town, we have a lot of existing non-conforming uses. Um so there may be a commercial use on a property that's zoned residential or vice versa. So we want to make sure the regulations are applying to the use, what's there, and not what it may be zoned. And so this too is gonna prevent people from having to get variances for something that they really shouldn't need a variance for. We're, we're talking about what the use of the property is, not what that underlying zoning may be, so it's really more applicable to what's actually going on with the property. And then um the next is remove the minimum height requirement for residential uses abiding a commercial or industrial use. Um we cap a maximum height requirement for fences in any zoning district, but for some reason there was in here a minimum height requirement for residential uses abiding a commercial or industrial use. So this is gonna be just applying to that residential use that may butt up to a commercial or industrial use. Um a commercial or industrial use is still gonna have a minimum height requirement. But if a homeowner next door wants to put in a fence that is less than six feet tall, that's, that should be within their prerogative to do that as the residential homeowner um instead of being required to put in that six-foot fence. That's, commercial or industrial use still has to meet minimum height requirements if they put in a fence. But this is giving a little more flexibility to the homeowner to put in what they feel is appropriate for their situation. Um and then again, um revise some language relating to fencing around a pool to reference the applicable building code. And again, like Bethany had said before, this is just us referencing whatever building code is in place at the time instead of having separate regulations that people have to kind of decipher between. Um and that, that creates inconsistencies. Again, when we're having to read our code and then, okay, go look at the building code, no, just our rule is that you follow the building code for the fence around your pool, and that's already addressed very specifically in there, so there's no need for us to have to cover it again. And then um there were some very specific requirements for decorative fences in the central business district. Um I, this is one where I'm not sure why decorative fences were called out separately. Um there's already requirements for fences in the zoning district. Um and so it, it was for some reason handling decorative fences more stringently, um and I'm not.
The, the only thing I thought of is growing up around here, there were a lot of those metal iron fences around
Sure, yeah.
that were all mangled and people didn't keep them, cause I, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and fences in the CBD have to be reviewed by the development review committee anyways.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is why we decided to remove it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's.
So streamlining that a little bit. Um next section, article seven, the design standards. Um there was just a funny thing referencing two feet eighteen inches. I'm not sure why it was said that way, if it was a joke when it was written. Um that's three feet six inches.
I saw, I started laughing.
Yeah, someone probably just put that in to see if people were actually reading it.
Pay attention.
So, yeah, we, we finally caught it. Um and then clarify the language regarding maximum driveway width for residential properties. Um let me find where this one was, this one was kind of a funny one. Um yeah, so it's driveway widths within the front yard should be limited to nowhere than thirty percent of the lot frontage width as measured at the front building line or thirty feet from the front carriery line, whichever is less. And so we come to a point where we were interpreting it different ways. So is it a maximum, can the driveway be a maximum of thirty percent of the lot frontage width or thirty feet, whichever is less? And that wasn't what it is. The way it was written was meant to say it should be measured at the front, at the building line or thirty feet back, whichever is less, not that the driveway should be limited to thirty feet in width. Um it was just worded a little bit funny. Um so that's really taking into accounts lots that may be deep. Um your standard front setback is twenty-five feet, but you may have lots where your house is setback fifty, a hundred feet, um whatever, or you may have like a pie-shaped lot um where the lot gets, you know, significantly wider. And so it, it's kind of ta- meant to take into account those um situations that might not be standard, and so this is more for our clarity, we were running into a hard time interpreting it, and so we're just trying to get it worded a little bit better so that we're interpreting it consistently for folks. But it's not, not changing anything.
With that,
Uh-huh.
since there has, if, if, if there has been some issues with consistency with that, will the staff look back at previous decisions to make sure that they're in line?
So if folks feel like it was interpreted incorrectly, absolutely contact us and let us know. Um it would be pretty darn near impossible to look back at every driveway that's been approved um over the last however many years.
I didn't know if you kept it like a list of denials is what I'm more.
I mean, they're not, usually not so much denials, it's usually us working with property owners to modify it. So again, if folks feel like it's been interpreted incorrectly, come in and we'll take another look.
Okay, thank you.
So then the next um is article eight, the sign chapter, um. So um the first is revising the sign computation standards for multi-phase signs. The way it was worded, um it would have a, so say you had a two-face sign. Two faces flat against each other. Um the way it has been worded is that we should count the area of both sides to be the total. So if this is ten square feet and this is ten square feet, your sign is twenty square feet. Um and we felt like that was incorrect, that it should be
Right, ten.
Ten square feet.
Yeah.
Um if you have a slot, two-sided sign that's like this, that's a cer- certain angle apart, then yes, that's each face that would be counted.
Different shape.
Yes, and so we specified that, what that maximum angle can be before we're counting it as two separate that we're adding together. So that is what that one was about. Um the next is correcting all references to freestanding as two words, to freestanding as one word. And um
Was that you?
This came up because we had some property, some business owners um trying to get a free sign. Uh and I, I think they knew that that wasn't the intent.
Kind of give them credit.
Yes. Yes, I absolutely give them credit for being creative with um the, the um yeah, grammatical error in the regulations, but just kind of taking that option off the table. Freestanding is one word, just so we're clear. Um and then, let's see, we um refine the language relating to directional signage. Um directional signage is really meant to be that, you know, kind of enter here or, you know, loading dock over here, those types of signs. Um and the way it was written, it didn't reference wall directional signage. Um it was just referencing those freestanding kind of, you know, enter here, drive-through type signs. Um directional signage absolutely can and is placed on a wall plenty of times. And so just kind of revising that language so that those directional wall signs are accounted for as well. Um and then refining the language related to neighborhood identification signs. Um just to make it clear that that language also applies to multifamily developments. Um the way it was written, let me get to it, it's on the chart, uh for signs committed in residential districts, it just said neighborhood identification signs, so just adding development, so neighborhood slash development identification signs, just so it's clear, this is meant to include like a multifamily apartment complex or something like that, it's not just a single-family neighborhood. Um let's see, so refining language relating to projecting signs. Get to what page we're on.
Yeah, a lot, had to let us do a lot of freestanding lark over, didn't you?
Yes.
And so this one, the, the item six, the um lit signs, the, this is the one that exceptions go to the zoning appeals instead of the city commission, correct? Is that?
Signage?
Yes.
Yep, yep, signage goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um but those, those are what I was looking for. Um there are language about projecting signs, that's on page eight, eight dash twelve. Um so yeah, in there it said that variance should go to the city commission, that's incorrect. Variances for signs go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um the projecting sign shouldn't be any um different, and then.
The, so i- is that the screen that it is projecting on, or is that what the projecting?
No, the projecting sign is like projecting out from the wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Physically, like a blade sign.
Yeah, like a blade sign.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is what that is. And then we added language to allow for a wall sign. For a business without an exterior wall. Um, the way it's worded is that, um, you're allowed signage on. The exterior portion of the building that's directly adjacent to your property. So, in like multi-tenant buildings, um, you can only put your sign on the portion of the wall that is adjacent to your store. Well, we do have some buildings, um, multi-tenant buildings in town where there may be an interior tenant that doesn't have exterior wall space. Or they may not have an exterior wall space that fronts a public street. And so just adding language that those interior tenants are allowed those wall signs on the outside. Um, without again, having to go to the board of zoning appeals to get a variance.
Like Fort and Shaw, Shawnee.
Yeah, exactly, so right over here, yeah.
That's good.
Yep, and I believe they had to go to the board of zoning appeals at one point for those signs.
Yeah.
For those interior tenants. Um, Article nine, the historic preservation, um, just taking out the section related to variances. Um, it's not needed to have a separate kinda call-out for variances in each chapter since it's, um, addressed elsewhere. Article ten, and I'm seeing another cut and paste error on my part. The Article ten is called supplemental standards, not access and parking. Um, so that was just refining language related to solar arrays, um, for clarity. Um, again, the solar array is the ground-mounted solar system. And then we have a definition for, so a solar array is on the ground. And then we define a solar collection system as being the roof-mounted system. And so just trying to get that language so that it's not overlapping, um, when we're calling everything a solar collection system. It's hard not to do that when it's a system that's collecting solar energy, so just trying to, um, get ourselves straight on that. And then getting into Article twelve, which is our definitions chapter. Um, we just moved the definitions for manufactured home and mobile home, um, up under dwelling. So dwelling, comma, manufactured home, just so when we're looking for definitions. All the definitions for different types of dwellings are in one spot instead of, um, different alphabetical locations in the chapter. And then adding a definition for shelter home, um, we did not previously have that. Um, the, and the way our use table is worded, um, it's that any use that's not specifically defined. We as staff are supposed to just use the next closest definition. Um, as you're what, we have one shelter, um, in town. When that came through, we didn't have a definition for shelter home. The closest thing we had was domestic violence shelter, and so that's what we had to use in looking at that. And so just getting that defined, um, and that's something that a lot of communities have actually been having to add to their, um. Their use tables, um, in the last few years, so. And this is a definition that, um, we researched and took from other cities who have done it recently as well. And then finally, our appendix A, which is the use table. Um, add a requirement for special use permit for manufactured dwellings in our single-family zoning districts. Um, that's, so the manufactured dwelling, um, is. Let's go back to our definitions. So, this, those are not generally considered to be just a, a standard single-family home. It's not, um, like where they kind of bring the trusses in and like the wall sections and stuff.
Comes in two pieces and put it on a foundation.
Yes, so they bring in the house, set it on a foundation, and that's really defined in our, in the building code as well, how that's classified. So, um, you can do that in a single-family zoning district, you just need a special use permit for it. So it, it's pretty much, yeah, like you said, it's a home that's built off-site, brought in, put in that foundation.
So one to block up the traffic on a highway.
Yes, yeah. And then, um, adding a use category for shelter home, again, since we had added those, uh, that definition. And then requiring a special use permit for private wind energy systems in all zoning districts. And that is, again, to be consistent with the requirements of Article four, where that had already been laid out. Earlier in the regulations, so. Now that's kind of a lot, hopefully you guys had a chance to lick it over. Um, if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
I, and I can't remember why. I looked this up one day, but, um, don't we have an ordinance against rain collection or water collection? Um, that you have to, um.
Like rain barrel? I'm not sure if there is one in the city ordinance.
In our appendix that, that's permitted in our, in residential.
For.
For water storage.
Uh, water storage, uh.
Is that different than water collection?
Yes, yes, we have.
The definitions.
Yeah, I should've brought down my whole book.
Is it in that book?
I thought about it.
Come on now.
Yeah, yeah, you've got it. In the definition, yeah.
It doesn't have a search button.
In the bow.
Wait a minute, this is where you have to use pen and paper.
I hereby resign.
Water storage, potable commercial water storage structures or features more than ten thousand gallons.
Okay.
So that's not gonna be a residential. So that'd be your water tower.
So, just to clarify, you can have a rain, uh, barrel.
Um, I, I'm not sure, rain barrels are not covered in the development regulations. I will check in the city ordinance and get back with you.
Can you bring in those? Five, five thousand or five hundred gallon big plastic things to store water in as a single-family residential?
Our regulations do not prohibit that.
Okay. All right, uh, any discussion from the, um, commission on any of the proposed rules as they were sent to us?
I just, I'd just like to make a comment that I think the planning department did an excellent job. All those freestandings that they had to go through.
There's a lot, most of these come up throughout the year as we get questions, and Michelle does a really good job of keeping us organized. And she has an ongoing list of things that come up throughout the year. That, that we need to, and we've already got our list going for next year, so. As, as you use it, as you use it, you know, you, you come up with, upon a section, oh, well, we haven't dealt with that before. And I guess that doesn't really address what it should be addressing, so that's. Or something that comes up repeatedly, you know.
I, I do hope that we can find a, a solution to the non-conforming issue, though, that, the folks that. In the process of selling their house, they, then they find out that they have non-conforming and, and all of that. We've had people that have loo- lost residential sales because they're waiting for us to.
Yeah, and.
Kinda get the permit and.
A, a lot of that has stemmed, and like we said before, a change in lending practices. Um, and I, I'm not sure why some lenders require a, um. A zoning verification letter from us and some don't. There's tons of properties sold in town, I mean, on a daily, weekly basis. We get a call for a zoning verification letter on a fraction of them.
Sure.
Um, and so, when we get those, if we have to say, no, this could not be rebuilt as is. We say why, if it's the zoning, setback, whatever, it's not conforming. And for some reason, we've noticed in the last four or five years, um, lenders. Now will not lend on those, um, and so it's nothing that the city's changed.
Sure.
It's been a lending.
I feel like it's always kind of been.
And I'm, I'm not sure.
Different decades, and I can say I've always had some kind of zoning issue where the banks have come back.
Yeah, and we, we don't get requests for letters on the vast majority of properties that are sold. So I'm not sure what triggers it for appraisal companies or lenders changing jobs or.
I can tell you, that's, it's because of what, how they are insured. You know, when they sell that loan, if they sell it to Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. Uh, in a secondary market, now if they hold it in their own portfolio, they underwrite their own risk. But a lot of the single-family homes are sold to Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, or federal home loan bank board. And they require certain things, so if it's a non-conforming use, it's not because of the lender, it's because who's buying the loan at the lender's.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
And we, and we will send the letters, um, that it cannot be rebuilt as, as is. It could be rebuilt with issuance of a special use permit or with a rezoning. Um, so we're happy to put that in, um, and we've done that. Um, it, it just kinda depends on the institution that we're dealing with. But yeah, absolutely, that's something that, um, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah.
Um, and there's no, like, one.
Wish there was something proact that, that we can do, especially with the, the county.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue to take, kinda keep looking into what we can do to, um, you know, streamline a process. Or, or do something for folks that are caught in that.
Okay.
So, um, I move a motion.
Well.
Do we have to do that?
We have to open it for a public hearing first. Uh, is there anyone here that would like to speak on these regulations, proposed regulations?
Hello, everyone. Can I make speak for a moment?
Yes, if you can, name and address, please.
Certainly, uh, my name is Laura Fowler, and I'm speaking on behalf of the property that is now twenty-five hundred Heblin. Um, I moved to Leavenworth last summer. And this is in regards to the, um, the adjacent right-of-way slash Hammerhead discussion that we had talked about earlier. Um, and I would ask that the commissioners, um, refrain from voting on that particular measure. Until the city can provide specifics on what you're voting on. And I'll give you an example, um. Ma'am, would you be able to pull up the GIS site, please? So I am a property owner in which this would affect me. Um, I say this in that, um, these stipulations were essentially, um.
Two Bs, I think.
Yeah. Yes, H E B B E L N. And, and those were listed, um, as a condition for me to replat this property. Um, it was originally designed to be a neighborhood in nineteen eighty-seven. And, um, the owner had essentially not done anything with the land for the last thirty-five years. And this, um, was absolutely something that I've been dying to own was property so that I could do home setting, conservation. Um, small-scale farming, I did join the Byron Farming Coalition, for example. Um, I hope to be a part of the farmers' market at some point. Um, if you can look at the end of Heblin Drive, of which this is again, one case study, uh, of which I would be negatively affected by this. Um, I did have an asphalt company give me an estimate on that, but without any type of specs on, okay, do I need AB three? Do I need, how much rock do I need compacted? Do I need three inches? Do I need six inches? What do I need? Um, it, it's impossible to get really an estimate on, on, on what this is actually gonna cost me. Um, another example is what is the square footage? When we say Hammerhead, is it twenty by thirty? Is it twenty-five by thirty? Um, these things, obviously, if I'm going to pay for materials in time, that those considerably impact the amount of, um. Out-of-pocket expense that I would be required to pay. For me in particular, this does hit home personally, it's not just one dead end, it's two. If you would go further south, please, for me. This includes Vilas, so at one point I had, uh, wanted to have, uh, if you see these houses along the southern end of Vilas. I had at one point wanted to have a half-acre lot, so that if I wanted, if I needed cash or money or some. At some point, I could sell a half-acre lot to someone who might wanna build a house there. And the requirement, again, at the city, this was August of last year, was that I couldn't have a lot made. As in like, platted, um, without a corresponding hammerhead to go with that. Now, the issue for me particularly is that there is a creek that runs along that border. So, in my opinion, a hammerhead would be even more costly because of all of the, the structural, um. And foundational, I don't know, gravel that would need to be put in place in order to make a hammerhead for whatever the unwritten rule is. Um, so, off of the one estimate, it was about ten thousand dollars without anything relating to the creek. Um, you start adding in other issues like that, and I, I automatically just double the cost in my head. So, I would estimate that this would cost me about forty thousand dollars. So, with that cost then, of course, so let's, let's verify that, that the cost is, is required, right? What, what is the requirement? Um, so in this case, um, the, what was told to me was that, um, I need to put this in place. In order to either build my house or put, or, or plat a lot in there. Um, so that a lost driver could have a turnaround spot, or that the Amazon driver could have a turnaround spot. So those were the two reasons given to me, um, which I, I don't personally see the value in me spending forty thousand dollars for a lost driver. Perhaps as a solution, maybe we could have some verbiage in there that is just for developers only. But again, this is for subdivisions, of which I acknowledge this is the end of a subdivision that was never completed. It was technically, i- it should have been declared abandoned in nineteen ninety-five, and it was not. So, some of this is cleaning up the old paperwork that, that should have been cleaned up twenty to thirty years ago. Um, my family and I have been trying to do that, we're currently working through some encroachment issues with some of the neighbors. Who had built structures on, uh, over their property line, so, um. We don't need to get excited about it, but there's just, the, again, the property hasn't been used in thirty years and, and there's, it's going to get used. Um, and there's some things that do need to get cleaned up on it. Um, so with that, uh, again, I just, I ask that the, the commissioners here, um, refrain from voting on that. Until you have all of the information. I offer my, my story as one example of how this would negatively impact me and has already negatively impacted me. And that I couldn't plat my land the way I wanted to because of a, a rule that literally didn't exist yet.
First, let's hear from the staff, so to, to come into. Conformance or, or whatever, what, what would be required?
Just to kinda be clear about what we're talking about, the requirement that the end of a dead end can't be counted for, against, counted as a lot width. Doesn't have anything to do with constructing a turnaround. Um, but thi- this is a good example right here, so this large lot here, um. We have a requirement for a minimum lot width, and that is to give you frontage along a right-of-way. For you to construct a driveway, to have your house potentially front onto. Obviously, in a lot like this, your house isn't gonna front out onto it, but you still need to have that lot width along a public right-of-way. So what we're saying by adding this provision is that only this portion. Right here, along Vilas Street, could be counted as your lot width. That this portion, at the end of that dead end, could not be counted as your lot width. So this lot right here, this would be your lot width that we'd be looking at. That's gonna meet, it's two hundred and forty feet, that's gonna meet any minimum lot width requirement. If this lot did not have this portion down here, if Vilas just dead-ended into this lot. Um, what we're saying is that, no, you could not count this dead-end portion as a lot width. Because then you would be left with, your only option would be to have a driveway come off the end of that. This has nothing to do with constructing a turnaround, um, quote Hammerhead. That's solely a public works requirement, our regulations do not deal with what a turnaround is required. This is trying to eliminate the need for that, um, so here would be your lot width. Not the dead end, so just to be clear what we're talking about.
So, if I heard her correctly, she said that she wasn't able to plat because of this requirement.
We thought.
That would be us.
We, there were multiple versions to a, a potential lot layout that came in. I don't remember e- exactly what had been proposed, I know at one point there were one or two lots proposed down here. Um, I, I don't have those.
That's like right in the middle of the creek, I.
Yeah, I, I don't have those draft, um, revisions in front of me to know exactly where, how they were situated, but. Yeah, I, I don't have those draft, um, revisions in front of me to know exactly where, how they were situated, but.
If, if I can ask you, the, so the, the spirit of what we're talking about, though, is, and I think you said it earlier, is for like developments. And this is, we rezoned this, it was agriculture or whatever, and we rezoned it to single family or, or.
At, at some point in the, yeah, in the past, yeah.
So. We know that this is just going to be residential, this is not going to be, right now, it's not even zoned for it to be multifamily or, or.
Correct.
Commercial or whatever, um, if we're standing in the way of her plating.
It's been platted.
Right, but not the way, not the way she owns the land, right, I mean.
It just didn't include.
And we did have space for a driveway.
Pardon, I didn't hear what you said.
One of the, the drafts that we had was, um, would have allowed for a driveway to come off so that it wouldn't have, cause there is a creek right there, so it. It would be astronomical to put any type of road over that creek, um. Uh, as far as like culverts and all that, so.
So again, this is trying to prevent that situation of there being an unwritten rule. Um, and so that's what we've run into, there've been a number of situations where there hasn't been adequate. Um, frontage, and so folks have wanted to use that dead end width, um, and we've strongly discouraged that. But there hasn't been a written rule, so this is that situation of trying to prevent, um, us trying to enforce an unwritten rule. Um, as with anything, in those kind of one-off situations, there's always the process for a variance, I mean, that would have been an option here. Um, to request a variance from a regulation that staff was enforcing. So the, the intent with regulations is to deal with the bulk of cases. Um, there's always gonna be, no matter what the regulation is, there's always gonna be those kind of one-off or unusual situations. Um, that maybe warrant a variance, that's the process for the board of zoning appeals to consider those cases.
At the time, I understood that my plat request would not make it to this meeting unless I agreed to this. So if that's the case, then at this point I ask for, to be alleviated from that requirement from, what was it, September eleventh?
I mean, your, your property's been platted, so I'm not sure what you're asking for relief from.
There is a line in there that said that I'm required to put a hammerhead in at twenty by thirty feet.
That's not. Yes, that's a public works issue, that is not a plat issue, that's not a requirement, that's not a line that's on our recorded plat. That's a requirement of public works, and so that's something that.
About the AB three, the depth, everything should be covered by public works, correct?
That's public works.
Okay, have you addressed that with them, ma'am?
Um, I have, and I have not gotten responses to my emails.
What would you all suggest?
I, I'm not sh- I'm not sure what that communication has been, but it's not anything for our department. Or this board to address the requirements of the public works department.
But yet you're voting on it.
It, that they're not voting on the requirement of a hammerhead or a turnaround, um, material, composition, design, anything like that.
This doesn't require a, uh, a hammerhead be put in in, in these situations.
That's what we're talking about, that the width of a dead end. Not be counted towards a lot with requirement has absolutely nothing to do with the requirement for a turnaround. Or the composition of a turnaround should the public works department decide that one's required.
Does that answer your question?
The next question is, how do I get out of that requirement that I didn't feel was right to begin with?
I would suggest, um, if she's been unable to contact the public works director, that she contact the city manager.
You need to elevate it, ma'am. Yeah, or, or a city commissioner.
Yeah, it wouldn't be this board.
I think they're right, it's really not an issue for this commission. Should be public works resolving.
Who is your city commi- Mike, you wanna have city commissioners?
Um, I would suggest contacting the, trying the city manager first, the city commissioners are just gonna contact the city manager. Um, with that, so that, that would be my first suggestion is to contact the city manager.
I did get a, a name and a process, um, it just seemed a little, um. He advised that I essentially have, um. Essentially like a, a petition, essentially stating my case and having others sign for it, so it was in.
The city manager suggested that?
Yeah, so in the military we call that going nuclear, like I, it seemed like I was going nuclear on that, so I was trying to go.
That you spoke to?
Um, it was actually my mother who spoke to, and I don't remember who it was, this was in December.
I, I think the discussion with the city manager should generate a response from the public works department to you on your request.
Speak for who said what, but that doesn't sound like a response from the city manager, so I'm not sure who was contacted.
Part of my reason for, there is a process, what is the process, how do I get there?
I would state your issue, and you would like a response from public works, and maybe they could help make that happen.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else here to speak about that? We'll close the public hearing, any discussion from the commissioners based on what we heard here?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we still have the same three, um. Decisions here to recommend approval and bulk, uh.
Approval or denial or table for further discussion, so, and. And if there were any specific regulations that you want us to look at a little bit further, what we'd probably do is. Kind of take the whole thing off of moving forward to city commission, so we send them all as a package to the city commission, ju- just if that was.
Not piecemeal.
Yeah, where you're going.
Okay, so either discussion or I'll entertain a motion.
I feel like that it was very clear that it needs to go through public works and city managers, so. I'm gonna stand with a motion to move the text amendments, uh, and approve it as a whole.
We have a. Motion to approve the text amendments as written, and it is second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? To unanimous?
Um, we have no other business, and we do have a March meeting.
Would it, do we have anything on the agenda already?
Yes.
Yes.
For March, okay.
I will not be there.
We'll call you.
I see, yeah, my rotary phone, I see.
The fourth.
Is it the fourth?
We do have preservation this week too.
Yeah, I know, I'll see you guys Wednesday. Yeah, I got that figured out.
We can go ahead and adjourn?
Yep, you can adjourn the meeting, your boss.
I don't have a gavel.
Don't we need a motion? Hey, I'm not getting the gavel out, it's right here. I am the keeper of the gavel.
I tell you what.
So you should decide whether it's issued or not, depending on the situation. Are you right-handed or left-handed?
I'm right.
Okay, I think you're safe.
Yeah, well.
I know.